Good morning. It is nine o'clock. We're here for our regular scheduled county commissioner meeting. Commissioner Mullen, are you on the phone?
I am.
Welcome. And so we have two commissioners in-house. Commissioner Mullen's on the phone. We have our county administrator, Mr. Danzel, and our clerk of the board. So at this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everybody to please rise and join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is adoption of the current agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been brought to my attention that we need to pull item D from regular business at this time.
Okay. So we have a motion to pull item D from the regular agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Mullen seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Takes us, so we have the, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the exception of item D?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the agenda as presented with the exception of the item D that we just pulled.
I'll second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Public comment. Anybody for public comment? And we do have those phone lines available. If anybody would like to use them. Do we have anybody on the phone?
I've had some people question whether I do things that I said I did, but on straight commission only in 1998 for Mutual of Omaha, I was agent of the month in October, August, and then became a part of the Builders Club. So what I've, when we reviewed the self-insured plans last week, I mentioned that I was highly in favor of, I'm gonna say McLennan, that's what stuck in my brain, but the second option, and here's why. I think the gentleman that has been visiting with us from Blue Cross Blue Shield is a fine man. I don't disparage him at all. I'm just curious in my thought process why there was no previous look at having self-insured to save us money as a public entity. Sometimes, and I'm not saying this, happened, but sometimes when you're a broker, the other insurance companies like Travelers or Enemclaw, they're all giving incentives to the brokers to sign people up, and the broker actually gets a little bump as well. I'm not saying that happened, but sometimes that is what happens. The third proposal said they had left board as a client, and they had nothing to say during the legislative session when that was so vehemently debated. And to help you understand, firefighters don't have social security. They don't have long-term care. They have their pension, left one. And so that was curious to me. And then some, I looked at some of their other clients. I'm not sure that there's a sense of shared values, but certainly a lot of work with VIBA. But the second one, the gentleman said, "I will be here every day. I will develop those relationships. I have vast resources." We've dealt with VIBA, and it sounds to me like he has a depth and a width that Franklin County needs. And so that's why I wanted to explain that further, but with the limit of public comment, I left it for today. Thank you.
Do we have anybody on the phone? Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move down to the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd just like to make a comment.
Absolutely.
Blue Cross Blue Shield did not present to us. Blue Cross Blue Shield is an insurance company. We were interviewing brokers, and so we didn't talk to Blue Cross Blue Shield. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the consent agenda items one through six as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second for the six items on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Takes us down to regular business. Fertile item on the agenda is the prosecutor's office request to hire a crime victim coordinator at grade thirteen, step three. And I believe this says presented by Sean Sant, but I think it's gonna be Mr. Briggs.
And that's accurate. Mr. Briggs with the prosecutor's office. Good morning, Board. So we are requesting to bring in a crime victim coordinator at a grade thirteen, step three. The reason for that is the amount of experience this individual brings with 25 years of experience in the legal community, working as a clerk in the federal court system, and also a prior county employee that's worked in our clerk's office. So just a tremendous amount of experience that this individual is bringing to our office, and so we feel it's appropriate to bring her in at that step and grade. And also, this will not negatively impact our budget as the outgoing employee that we are filling that vacancy was at a grade thirteen, step five. So the calculations that we have on hand, I think the savings are about $2,100. So not a tremendous amount of savings, but there also are savings associated with this move. So we would ask that the Board make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-225.
Commissioners, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is currently an employee within the prosecutor's office?
That's correct.
And so they're current, they're currently at a thirteen-one?
That's accurate, yes.
And so why, what is the, what is the reason to go to a thirteen-three from a thirteen-one?
The reason to go to a thirteen-three from a thirteen-one is just the amount of experience. A thirteen-one would be appropriate for an entry-level employee that didn't have any experience, and this employee is bringing to the office over two decades of experience in this area.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mullen, questions?
Is this person a new hire?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have no questions. If there's no more questions, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Mullen? Hearing no motion, we can't pass it. So with that, we'll move down to item B, Resolution 2025-226, petition for vacating a portion of right-of-way of West Drady Street and ordering a county engineer to report there. Mr. Erdman.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. On June 9th, 2025, the Public Works Office received a petition signed by 11 landowners adjoining to West Drady Street requesting that a portion of right-of-way off of West Drady Street shown between Short Platt 2003-22, Lot 2, and Short Platt 2022-07, Lot 1 be vacated. The petition was accompanied by a sufficient bond as required by law pursuant to Chapter 12.08020 of the Franklin County Code. Upon filing such a petition, the Board of Commissioners may but are not required to proceed with an intention to vacate the portion of the road requested. Please be advised that this portion of right-of-way was presented with an engineer's report in March of 2021. The Board of Commissioners at that time determined no action to move forward with that vacation. The Board will need to decide if they wish to consider the petition or not. If the Board decides to consider the petition, it must signify its intent with the resolution and order the county engineer to report on such a vacation. And we have proof of energy with a resolution for such a case. I will state that as it was in the background that we did present this to the Board, Commissioner Didier, I believe you were here, and Commissioner Mullen were here, so you've seen this, this particular portion of right-of-way before. We provided an engineer's report. We cited four conditions. There was close proximity of water and sewer from the city of Pasco. Two utilities were already in and inside the easement. The extension of Drady Road would be a logical connector between 44 and 48, and that could potentially, vacating it could potentially be a hindrance to future development. I will point out that I do not see any of those four conditions have changed or will change, just for the Board's information as to whether they wish us to proceed to investigate further. If the Board feels that we missed something, or that there should be something more further to look through, then the Board's prerogative to move forward, of course.
Questions, Commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In reading through the, the information that you put together from the last time that Commissioner Didier's looking at now, it's my understanding from the information that the city of Pasco provided that it appears that sewer is on Road 48?
Yes, I believe that's, yes. And water, or 44? 44 or 40, I don't know. In my report I had, I had water on 48 and sewer on 44.
So it appears in order to access those homes through which this easement would go, this is the only access, as I understand it, from the city's information?
Yes. And they also came through in their report in 2021 and were against vacating that for those reasons, for similar reasons that I gave the Board.
Okay. Can you speak to, in that alignment, looking at that, at the area that which is proposed to be done away, there's, to the east of that, there's a shop in that way. Can you speak to kind of what that process would look like if, if the city were to ever annex that property and then want that connection to happen?
That would be some sort of negotiation as to what to do with the outcome, you know, up to and including condemnation of the easement.
What would the, what would it look like if we were to move forward with this process? What would that look like with the utilities that already exist there? If we were to, if we were to abandon this right-of-way, but there's already utilities there, what happens?
Well, we do have, there is a process in the vacation, and I generally recommend it with most vacations that we do, that we maintain an easement for existing utilities access only. And that that would be part of the, if the Board moved forward with the vacation, to leave that easement for the, for the existing utilities, not future utilities. Only the ones that are in there now would have access to their infrastructure under that law.
Do you, I probably have an impossible question for you.
Well, give it a shot.
So if we were to abandon this right-of-way, it would go back onto the tax rolls?
Well, that's a little bit out of my, I'm not the assessor, so I would assume that it would, but I don't want to be definitive on it because, you know, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of the, as the engineer, not as the, as the tax collector, so.
I appreciate that. I had another question, but it escapes me right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mullen, do you have any questions?
No questions.
And I could interject with an answer on the right-of-way. I believe when a right-of-way is vacated, the, it goes down the center line of the road, and then that vacated right-of-way goes to the, fronting the adjoining property owners, and so would return to the tax rules.
May I?
Yes.
Do you have any idea what that would bring back to the tax rule? Any, any idea?
Not a whole lot. I mean, it's a little bit, it's a little bit of property.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not gonna be a windfall?
Significant, no. At least in my opinion.
So just for clarity, we're, we're talking about a portion of property here that's one of the donut holes?
Yes.
And therefore, it's the county's responsibility? And the city, if this was to be put into the city's jurisdiction, which it probably should have been by now, it'd be their responsibility?
Yes.
And so we, we need to have a meeting with the city of Pasco about these donut holes and possibility of what we're gonna resolve here, because this has gone on way too long. It needs to be annexed into the city. I know there are some people out there that doesn't, do not want that to happen, but this has really created a quagmire for the county to try and deal with this as far as our responsibility. And I believe Mr. Briggs has something to say.
I do have something on that. So I think it was last week, perhaps, Wes presented on the countywide planning policies, or that's gonna, maybe that's forthcoming. I just reviewed them last week. So yes, I don't believe those are on yet. Sorry about that. But that, that is coming from the, from the planning office. And what those countywide planning policies do is they're designed to provide a mechanism for the cities and counties to plan for basically smart coordinated growth in the urban growth areas. And I believe one of the policies that he is proposing is that, and, and this is in alignment with the Growth Management Act, that, that infill development occur before you start developing, you know, brand-new land in the north UGA, for lack of a better term.
So my next question, Craig, is if we were to vacate this easement, would this be a problem for the city if it was?
Yes, potentially. They would have to go back into, you know, potential right-of-way negotiations up to, including condemnation and stuff for something that already exists. I don't, I don't.
So with that being said, I think that we stand with our last decision.
What I think I heard you say, Mr. Chairman, is that you would like our county administrator to set up some type of a way for us to work with our building and planning director and, and have a summit on how do we develop smart growth together? And I would second that motion.
How'd you get that out of that few words that I said?
So here's how I got that. So I've been a land developer for a long time, and I've got stuck between many, many times of trying to figure out how to do it. And so I, I think that it would be very helpful. And I know Mr. McCart here in the room has been working on that, and thank you for that, and, and think that it's, it's very helpful that we do that. And so I would agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that at this time, I would, I would, I think that standing on the decision that, that you made in the past is probably the best decision until we get them, the countywide and planning policies in place, and that can better guide this type of decision.
So no need for a motion? It's just been declined by, move?
I would move it and vote on it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, for reason of addressing this, I would move that we address Resolution 2025-226 as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Discussion.
So as I, as I stated, I think with the information we have before us, with the decision that you made as my predecessors before now, with the information that we have, that we should decline to move this forward at this time.
If there's no more discussion, all in favor say aye. All again say nay?
Nay.
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 Okay, so that makes us, moves us down to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Resolution 2025-227, adopting state procurement procedures presented by Mr. Danzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Kind of like the federal procurement policy, a state procurement policy offers significant advantages that align with our duties of fiscal responsibility and efficient county administration. By leveraging the state's established procurement processes and contracts, Franklin County would benefit not only because of compliance issues, but also because it would lead to efficiencies and savings. State contracts often come with volume discounts due to the collective buying power of numerous agencies. This allows the county to acquire goods and services at lower prices than it might achieve through independent procurement. That's just a portion of it. Procurement policies, as you know, we're sure, ensure access to reliable, high-quality products and services, and furthermore, it sets us up to be able to comply with not only the state auditor's office, but also some of the funding mechanisms throughout the state government. So to summarize, adopting the state procurement plan empowers Franklin County to secure essential goods and services more efficiently, cost-effectively, and in full compliance with established standards, ultimately benefiting the county's budget and its citizens. And I would like to say thank you to Mr. Briggs. One of the issues that we had this morning when you were taking item D off the agenda is that we've worked item D into item C. So we've combined a document where the purchasing plan is now found within the state procurement plan. And I think I described this to you at one point, what I'd like to do is when we get all of our financial plans in order, is try to consolidate them into standalone. So I would recommend that you pass this resolution. I think it'll be good for not only, like I said, being able to pass muster with audits, but I think it'll be a streamlined process for us to be able to purchase.
Commissioners, questions?
Just a comment. Just want to say thank you for putting in the hard work on this. I can, having seen the first draft and seeing this what's before us, appreciate you combining those into one, and I think we should pass this today.
Commissioner Mullen, any comments or questions?
No, just looking forward to it, and thank you, Mr. Danzel.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval, approval of Resolution 2025-227 with one adjustment. The way that we presented this to the public, we need to adjust the title. We need to change the, just the wording on the title. So I'll read that out, as I would propose that we change it to. And so the title I would like to see it say is "In the Matter of Adopting Procurement Policy and Procedures Manual for Franklin County, Washington." And with that, I move for approval.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second for Resolution 2025-227 with the addition of the title that Mr. Baumann read off. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Takes us down to action item, employee benefits, broker selection and contract direction. Mr. Danzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Gentlemen, you will recall that we are due to select a broker. This agenda item calls for the selection of such broker to assist the county in managing and optimizing its employees' benefits plan. You already know that qualified, experienced brokers essential to navigate the complexities of health insurance, ensure competitive rates, and provide comprehensive support for the county's medical, dental, vision, and ancillary benefits. Gentlemen, as we fully vetted each brokerage with a robust process, it is now the Board's decision to make.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's in the best interest of Franklin County. After hearing all the robust testimony and presentations that we had, I would move that we approve Marsh McLennan as Franklin County's new insurance broker.
I would second that.
There's been a motion and a second for the broker to be Marshall McLennan. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All right. We got our broker. With that, we'll move down to continuation of public hearing. At this time, I'll reopen the public hearing on the ordinance repealing and replacing Franklin County Ordinance 4-2009 and Resolution 2019-303 updating the procedure with public records requests are administered.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Danzel.
I appreciate, I appreciate a public records officer putting this ordinance together. If you all didn't see anything that needed changed, I would recommend that you adopt it.
Commissioners, questions? Or, because I went through it, and I think it's well done. I just had, within five business days of receipt, the public records request, the public records officer shall respond. That's, we don't charge for under 35 pages, and I'm just ask why not?
Mr. Chairman, I think that one of the balancing acts that you have to do with the Public Records Act is you've got to try and be as transparent as possible while not going broke in the process. But the, as Gray has stated, the law and the, and the courts both favor, and not just by a little bit, but by a very wide margin, folks that are requesting those records, not the government entities that are providing them. And so I think that what, what that is saying is that if it's an easy and locatable document and something that isn't gonna take a lot of time, if Commissioner Baumann and his other walk of life as a developer came in and wanted a public record that made a lot of sense for what he was doing, it doesn't seem like we should just charge all of our citizens to a point that seems a little bit arbitrary. So I think that's kind of what the, what the gist is here, but I didn't know if you wanted to add to that, Greg.
We do also, more often than not, we're able to fill the requests through GovQA, and so we're not charging them for paper documents most of the time. That's in there because if someone does request physical copies, we are able to charge them. We just typically, as Mr. Danzel, I think, pretty well put it, don't charge for a small amount of paper documents, just to make those more accessible. However, most times when people are requesting physical copies, there are dozens, if not hundreds, of documents that are at stake, and we are charging for those.
And that's, that's multiple requests at 35 pages or less, and it's, public records officer may waive. So you have that sole responsibility. Is there a record of that that we can be aware of? How many times we're waiving for one person?
I believe that GovQA does track that. If it doesn't already, we can enable something like that. I also tend to put notes in the request itself in GovQA, so I know whether or not someone paid for it, whether they didn't pay for it. As far as like multiple records, it's more of like different parties, not just like one person getting it waived every time. There's also a process under statute where they can request a fee waiver. They have to make an argument under statute and say that it is either detrimental to somebody's safety or well-being, that they get the records faster, for free, what have you. But there is a process, and then I would review that on a case-by-case basis and determine whether or not I should waive that fee.
If I could add something on this?
Absolutely, Ms. Briggs.
So on, on these de minimis requests where it's 35 pages or less, I have heard that it actually costs us more to bill the requister than it is to receive the money.
I could probably see that, yes.
It does, yeah. It costs like five cents per a few pages, so it's not a large amount of money either.
Okay, then on Section 8, public records request officer contact information, the county shall maintain two public record, records officers. Currently, we only have one. So are we gonna have to hire another one?
The other one currently is Joy Gibson in the sheriff's office. She handles all of the requests for the sheriff's office, and her information is on the website under the public records.
So she's in the sheriff's office, then?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't gonna be hiring another employee.
No.
Okay. All righty. That's all my questions.
Thank you for the diligent work on this. I can tell, reading the old policy and what you've put together here, that there's been a lot of hard work. And so thank you for everybody that's worked on that. I think that's gonna be, be very helpful. Along the line of Commissioner Didier's concern, I have the same concern. Is there a way to, and this is a little bit press, preceded by getting contacted about somebody concerned about my comments last time about somebody abusing the system and that being a subjective thing? And that's absolutely correct. One person's Um, one person's perception of abuse is not another's, and, um, is there a way just to, without, you know, I don't, I don't know, I don't know exactly how to say it, but to identify if, if there's, you know, how much it's being used, I guess? Um, just, yeah, please.
Um, no, uh, to be blunt, and I, and I wish there was, and I, and I'll tell you something else, having served in both local government and in the state's legislature, I think the legislature are hypocrites for this particular issue because they exempt themselves from many of the same requirements that all local government people have to. But when we were having these revisions, I can tell you that the committee work, the whole entire, and the underwriting and the, and the, uh, rulemaking and the, uh, everything having to do with public records, it was always favoring the requister and concealing their identity so that there would be no retaliation.
I'm, I'm not interested in retaliation, but just, you know, identifying. There was another local jurisdiction here that, um, there was an individual that, that, said that they were going to vindictively, you know, pursue them with public records request, and they did so to the tunes of hundreds of thousands.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, if there's a, a clear and, and proper way of, of showing that, that somebody's abusing a system that's meant to serve the public, but they're abusing the, the system.
Yes, and they, and they, actually, they kind of, that's the one area where they did make some changes and modifications, like where prisoners or inmates could request public records just as a game so that they could try to make money. That actually has been addressed, um, and so that's no longer the case, and they're, I think, going to have to continually make adjustments to this. Um, I'm going to say something I don't think, I didn't like it either, I'll be honest with you. It's the one area I don't think that you can get too, uh, I don't know how cute with, because the, the, it just, all the case law, all the precedent, everything just so favors the requesting side. And so I think what you can get from GovQA are the figures and like how many times things are being requested, but I'd like to, the other part of this too, that you don't, you can do it, uh, uh, anonymously. You don't have to give your name to make the request, or you can give a phony name. We get them all the time. Uh, some of them are quite clever, but, um, that's kind of where the issue is, is that if I went in and right now, I could do it. I could go in there right now as John Doe and request, uh, public record, and so you could post that, yeah, okay, John Doe has requested that, but it's really Brian Danzel, if that makes sense.
No, I, I understand that. I just, um, when, when we have systems that are meant to serve the public, that people deliberately misuse and abuse, and they do it, um, for the purpose of harassment or, you know, um, bogging down the system or throwing sand in the gears, when, when that's the purpose of it, um, I think it needs to be exposed, and so I'm, I, I absolutely want to serve the public, I want the, you know, the public, um, I think it's a, I think it's a good tool for the public to have, to have access to, um, you know, we, we, we hear the term transparency about every third word in government, but, you know, I think it's a, a good purpose to have it in place, but, but when somebody deliberately tries to abuse something for the purpose of, of causing, causing disruption, that's where that I would like, that if there was a way to expose it, to expose it, even if it's anonymously, you know, John Q. Public has requested, you know, four-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand records, and, and this is why, when we're explaining to the government why that, you know, this process is slow, here's the reason why.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, the courts don't. And so the courts have said that that's the burden on the county, the government, is that...
Well, I don't know that it's a...
What's that?
I don't know that it's a court disagreement, but, but if, if somebody requests a, a, a public record and, and, you know, we tell them it's thirty days behind because we have four-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand that we're fulfilling.
Yes.
It's, it's a way to, um, to properly explain to the public why we can't give it to them in five days.
But I'm, what I'm saying is, is the courts have decided this in case law, and it's always favored one, they, what they have said is, we appreciate that you don't like that tough.
No, I understand that, but at least it's a way to explain to the public why that it's five days, not thirty.
And let's not forget that the taxpayer flips the bill until we have imposed this fee. I think this was a good move on our part, is putting in a deterrent if somebody was to come in and ask for that many documents, and that's how we're going to probably try to have a way to finally have a means of stopping this nonsense of bogging down our county government, so we can't move forward on the things that need to be worked on and have to focus on records requests. So I think this is well done, and I'd look for a motion to pass this.
Do we need to, being that it's a public hearing, do we need to do anything with that, or...
Well, right now, we got to pass it, and then I close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of ordinance zero-eight dash two-zero-two-five as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to pass ordinance zero-eight-two-zero-two-five. Is there any further discussion?
Could I add something?
Mr. Briggs.
Um, because this is a public hearing, that's, uh, the, the distinction with a public hearing is that the public can comment?
And we've left it, we've left it open, and we've had nobody, but is there anybody in the room that like to comment on this?
Okay, great.
We've left it open to receive public comment, we haven't received any, and so I did not open it up to the room, but, uh, just did. So with that, uh, we've got a motion and a second with, with, uh, no more comment. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes, and this time I'll close the, uh, ordinance, the open public hearing for ordinance oh-eight-twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you so much for your hard work on that.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners.
Good job. All right, with that, we'll move down to commissioner administrator updates. Uh, Mr. Danzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, well, the latter part of last week and through the, uh, beginning of this week, I was moving, so I was, uh, proud to say that, uh, now you have four Danzels that are proud Franklin County residents, and we're thrilled to death for that, so, yeah, thank you. Uh, obviously, I met with each commissioner individually to discuss the agenda as well as the strategic plan process that we'll get to in the workshop. Uh, worked with the board, uh, Clerk Alvarez and Assistant Herrera on policy as well as the strategic plan. Again, have to sing the praises of the ladies in the commissioners' office for doing outstanding job. I think it was emblematic, uh, of me having to take off to go move my family, and we didn't, we didn't have a drop-off. So a huge thank you to our clerk of the board and our assistant. Met with Gordon Thomason regarding the Juvenile Justice Center and some of the improvements that have been made there. We also spoke about our budget process and what that will look like, not just today, but into the future. I think the issue there is, is that with the Juvenile Justice Center, uh, they get, the funding comes from Benton County in a different way and in a different cycle than it does from Franklin County, and he was asking if we could try to, uh, mirror that and also look at possibly looking at it as a two-year cycle for his, that contract rather than just a one-year. Uh, I said, we're actually taking a look at a lot of our budget policies, but, uh, stay tuned, and, uh, let's have regular meetings so we can talk about these things, but was appreciative of that. Um, with that, I can only say that, uh, because of the move and everything like that, two things. I, uh, I appreciated the ladies taking over. I didn't, uh, have a chance to, uh, meet with as many folks as I normally do, and with the move, if I'm being honest, it's given me inspiration to pass on the apple fritters during the staff meetings. That's my update.
Commissioner Baumann.
Welcome to Franklin County. Please welcome your family as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, had a meeting last week, um, a couple of different meetings at the Hapo Center, one with the Hapo Center and, uh, LifeQuest, our neighbor next door, and, uh, the primary contents of that meeting was about, uh, the interest of having an access off of the freeway onto Convention Drive and what that might look like and, and how that might work, and, uh, trying to figure out how to, um, help with, uh, the flow of traffic in that, in that area. And so, um, I have a, a lot of experience and, and history with that. I met with the, the city, the city, uh, engineer, um, several engineers ago, um, out there as a private developer, because private developers are required to mitigate the impacts that, that their development would have to the roadway system, and, and Road sixty-eight is, uh, about at maximum capacity because of some of the ways things are laid out, and so trying to figure out how to help mitigate some of that. So, um, there's been a lot of interest in that over the year, and I think that there's, um, a lot of will now with all the different people from the city to the, the, uh, neighbors there at the Hapo Center, and certainly I'm in favor of trying to help figure out how to get better access to the Hapo Center and out of there. Had a really inspiring, uh, opportunity to do, to attend a groundbreaking of the Elijah Family Homes and their Sunrise cottages community over in, uh, Kennewick, and, uh, met with our administrator to ask if there's a way that we can, with some of the, the funds that, that we are responsible for, um, for housing in our community, if there's a way that we can assist with that. And so, um, Mr. Danzel has, said he would look into that and see if there's a way that we can be supportive of that. Really impressed with all the research I've done with Elijah Family Homes and their service to our community. One thing that I've been trying to do as I've, um, came into this role as a commissioner is, there's a lot of responsibility that comes with it, but having an understanding of, of, and the responsibility of, of, uh, deciding where, where the, the taxpayer dollars go and taking that very, very seriously of, of trying to say, is this doing good in our community? And everything that I have found, um, with Elijah Family Homes, I believe they are. And, uh, I've met with some of their board members to try to better understand and, uh, believe it's a, a organization that we should support as, uh, as our community has tasked us with that, with that, uh, job, and so would love to, to get a report on how can we, how can we help serve that organization with the funds that we're tasked with, with shepherding. Um, bridged in a meeting with our administrator, um, multiple calls about Fire District Five and Franklin County Emergency Management, including, um, several meetings on that, and, uh, look forward to continued progress there. Have visited with, uh, USDA Rural Development Director Kirk Pearson and, um, some of the efforts that he's been, um, undergoing since he came and visited with us, just really appreciate him coming and, and sincerely trying to help, um, serve Franklin County. So really, really appreciate that and, and excited about the potential next steps there. Have been, um, working hard to understand the Columbia Valley Center for Recovery. Um, you're all aware that I've been concerned about, um, scope creep and, and some of the stuff that has been happening there, been really diligently trying to understand where those monies are, are being spent and why they're being spent. Uh, my calculator, uh, it doesn't work when I take the number and divide it by the, by the, by what it does, the numbers aren't lining up the way that, uh, the way that I do, and it's something that I do every day, and, and can't figure out how to make them work, so been working on setting up a meeting, um, to better understand that. And then, um, this is a request, I'm not sure exactly how to do this, I have talked with our clerk about this and our administrator, and this is what I, I, this is what my idea is, but would, would certainly love to get some input. So right now, if you call the county commissioner's office, um, your, your, it's voicemail that answers, and then you listen through quite a, quite a lengthy time of all the different options you have, and, and then if you get to the option that you want and, and press that option, then the phone rings. And so what I would like to see is, I would like to see the phone ring immediately when you call, and then if somebody's not available to answer the phone, then it goes to the options. So basically, just do it backwards of the way we, the way we have it. Uh, I have talked to IS, they don't think that that would be difficult at all, and so, um, my, having, having, um, worked with, uh, the courthouse for a long time, would like to see that we adjust that, um, you know, where that, when, when you call, the phone rings, and then if somebody's not available, then it goes to voicemail, and kind of like what normal business looks like. So I would like to see us adjust that, so not sure if I need to make a motion to do that or how, but...
I agree with you, and I'll tell you, another thing is, when you go, uh, look at a lot of our folks that are working throughout the county, they give just the generic basic number to the county and not an extension, and that also is problematic if you, if you're on the road or you guys are out, and you go, well, let me call so-and-so, and you pick up the phone and it's the same number for everybody, and then you're sitting there and you got to wait for the seven minutes to go by, and you hit three different numbers to make your, so I totally agree with you.
So I, I just love the phone to ring, and, and I understand, people aren't always available, I understand that, and then it goes to voicemail, not, you know? And, and so I'd love to see us make that adjustment, so, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
It's always nice to have a live voice on the phone when you call.
Refreshing.
Yes. Commissioner Mullen.
So had my agenda meeting with Mr. Danzel, also had a tri-deck meeting last week. Uh, one of the topics up there was, uh, discussion on shrubland, and it's, um, something that I want to further educate myself on. Um, I think it's going to be an issue for us in the future, and right now, as far as, um, trying to provide affordable housing, um, it's not a one-size-fits-all, and it might work on the, uh, west side, but, uh, I think it's going to be some issues that we need, are going to concern us here in Franklin County. With that, that is my report, thank you.
And my report was the Columbia Basin Sustainable Water Coalition last week, agenda meeting on Tuesday, yesterday, work, work source executive meeting, and then work source board of directors meeting. And with that, we'll move down to correspondence if needed.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, outgoing correspondence, actually, so, um, what I've got before me, and then I'm going to pass down, is a letter asking for, uh, Senators Dozier, Schessler, uh, Binky, and Torres, as well as Representatives Connors, Bernard, Rude, Schmick, and Dai to attend on our, uh, night meeting of August twentieth, um, a workshop where we are going to discuss the Office of Public Defense and the caseload standards. I've been working with Larry Ziegler about this, this has got his blessing. Um, I've been working with, and Wes McCart has been working on this with Eastern Washington Council of Governments, this has got his blessing. I believe this would be a step in the right direction, does, we can start building the coalitions that we're going to need to, uh, and really get into the nuts and bolts of it. I mean, earlier this morning and, and a lot of our brainstorming sessions, we've talked already about like counties and counties that might not even be like us, but might be in the same circumstance. This would be able to allow not just us to air our grievances, but I think it would be a good way to be able to game plan with our state legislators so that they can put together a strategy for actually combating this.
I agree, so with that, uh, trying to coordinate this workshop, do we want to invite our fellow, fellow counties that, uh, Eastern Washington Council of Governments, if they would like to attend, to please attend? Yeah, I think it'd be good, the more, the more in the room, the better, especially with our state representation, and brainstorm and figure out how we're going to combat this.
I really like it, because that's where stuff gets done. You know, you got to actually roll up your sleeves and not just say, we don't want this to happen, but I think if you get a commissioner from each of the counties that represent the Eastern Washington Council call, so they don't run into, uh, an issue either, and plus travel's going to be a thing. Um, and then you get the state legislators involved, you get the OPD professionals involved. I think you got a hell of a team to try to take on some of these issues.
So do we want to make that down in the tri-cities or more of a centrally located, uh, area?
I have it right there in the letter, scheduled for our night meeting of August twentieth, because I thought it would be enough time to get down.
Okay, fantastic. I like it. Any other comments, commissioners? Commissioner Mullen?
No comment. Um, August twentieth is the night meeting, um, that is the week of the Benton Franklin Fair. So, other than that, no.
Well, and Commissioner Mullen, to be honest with you, only one commissioner from every county can attend, otherwise we'd have that, uh, oh, it'd be our meeting, yes, it's our meeting, so, yeah, okay, that, we would be good, we'd be in session, so, all right, well, I mean, it's, I know that it is the right date for everybody, but we got to make it happen when we can, and I think that's a good date. And plus, we got the fair here to entice them to come down.
I was just going to say, I think, uh, come on down, we'll buy you a deep-fried Twinkie, you know? We'll call it a day.
Sounds good to me.
Hey, Mullen, I think we're working right into your schedule here.
All right.
All right, well, let's pursue. I think you're just looking for a consensus on this, right?
Yeah, that's, uh, correct, sir.
Yes, I think you have the consensus on this, and...
Absolutely.
Okay. Is there any other correspondence that needs to be taken care of?
No, sir.
Public comment, down to public comment, anybody for public comment?
Good morning again, Michelle Andrews. To, um, to, to kind of go back to the prosecutor's office request, um, they have been very much struggling with keeping employees, and I, I would ask maybe, um, a cursory review because I don't want to see another experienced employee be lost from Franklin County. And, um, the, the people that work under this dome are so committed, they, they go through a lot of changes. I mean, I, I noticed some people shaking their head at... I mean, I noticed some people shaking their head at the choice of McLendon, but it is a paradigm shift and that's always hard when you're changing a vendor. And to address Mr. Baumann, I did mention the gentleman was a broker. Maybe I didn't say it clearly enough, so if there was some misunderstanding, Blue Shield Blue Cross has been here a long time and they're a great company. So also, I believe that the August 20th meeting would be very well strategically prepared to understand a First Amendment petition. And these are starting in other counties. I was at the cog meeting. A lot of these counties are feeling like they've got so much on their table, they feel a little bit overwhelmed. And the First Amendment petition is a way of redressing grievances with your government. And it, we talk at the county level first. And then we move up the chain in a very procedural way. And to give you a little history on this, this is exactly what the Tories' Acts did right before we declared independence from England. So, or from Britain. So they, there's an organization. They're saying, we have petitioned you. We've petitioned you. We've got the receipts. You're familiar with that phrase. But the First Amendment petition is a documented way of showing where they have violated certain constitutional aspects and that they need to come into compliance. It's a very powerful tool. So I'd encourage that as a strategic part of your action.
Anybody else for public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I was the petitioner for a resolution beyond the regular business. I'm a little bit disappointed on the level of information that was presented to you. This petition wasn't the same petition as it was presented previously by the, my old neighbor. That petition, so currently it is a 60-foot road easement. And the petition was to vacate the 60 feet, 30 feet on my side, 30 feet on my neighbor's side. However, leaving 20 feet of, excuse me, a 20 feet of easement for utility service. The previous petition only vacated my neighbor's 30 feet and did not leave any easement for utility service. The documents that was given to me from the previous petition had no pushback from the utility providers. The only pushback or concern was from the city of Pasco, which this is in the donut hole. And they were concerned about emergency services. Drady Street does not connect on 48, or excuse me, 44. These two parcels here is, that's the beginning of Drady Street. There is no reason where Drady Street would need to connect to 44 because there's nothing there as far as emergency services. The closest fire station is on about the 4,900 block, 5,000 block of Court Street. So you would just go up 48 anyway if there was any kind of emergency services on that, on that side of the area. And as development goes, I'm sure everyone's aware, the county and the city, they don't necessarily put in roads at their cost. When development gets created, it's paid for by the landowner, which goes down to the highest and best use, or four components of highest and best use, which is two of those are financially feasible and physically possible. As Mr. Baumann questioned, the neighbor to my southeast has a shop that would run right through the middle of this future road if it goes through that was just put up a few years back. So the city or the county, whatever jurisdiction they're in, approved this brand-new shop. The neighbor to the east of him has three buildings that do not meet the minimum setbacks for buildings versus the property line. So if the, if the rule for the public says you have to have your building this far back from the road, then it should also be sufficient for the county and the city. They can't put a road in and violate that same code. So this information was in that my package that I sent. I don't know what was sent to you, but it wasn't brought up by the presenter. And I'm a little bit disappointed in the level of information that was provided. I don't know if it's possible, but I'd ask if you guys could revisit that resolution, maybe table it until more information can be reviewed and you guys can have a better idea of what's on the table.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for public comment? Anybody on the phones? So with that, is there a need for executive session?
No.
No need for executive session. That moves us down to other business. Would anybody like to respond to the last comment? Mr. Baumann?
Oh, I wasn't gonna respond to that.
Oh, okay.
Something else.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wondered if there's anything, Mr. Erdman, that we can help you with in relationship. I've got a stick-it note here that talks about our turnouts on Taylor Flats and Glade Road potentially. Is there any, any way that we can be helpful as commissioners in that process? Or, I don't know, I feel like that we've asked you to look into it and I'm just wondering, is there any way that we can be helpful between the three commissioners? We probably know almost every landowner joining both of those roads. And if there's a way that we can, I don't want to get in the way, but if there's a way that I can be helpful, I'd be happy to help.
Well, right now, we're just looking at the feasibility of it. I'm still doing some background research. It's very unusual. There's no, to my knowledge, right now, I haven't found any standards and where placement would go and things like that. We're still trying to work those things out. I'd like some time to work on that and see if this is something that is feasible in the public benefit to do. I mean, on the face of it, it appears yes, but it is a more complicated issue than straightforwardly just putting turnout here or there. You know, there has to be some thought put into it. So we're still doing some research on that and looking into it. So we'd like to have some time to look at that further.
I understand that. I was just wondering if there's a, if there's a way that we can, that we can help. Sometimes I feel like that I ask somebody to do something.
It comes down to, you know, how it gets paid for. What, what don't you want public works to do instead of? Because something will have to be traded. You know, there's only X funding in the pot.
You don't get 30 hours a day?
30 hours a day? No, no, don't get 30 hours a day and don't get $1.10 for a dollar either. So, you know.
One thing you might want to consider, Craig, is working with the citizens because I've already got some citizens willing to.
And that would be helpful, you know, as far as acquiring, if we need to acquire right-of-way. You know, having your guys' involvement in the citizens and stuff. We have to, you know, right-of-way is a complex issue, even in a donation situation. You must tread carefully or endanger future work on the road. As I said, on the surface, it seems like a very simple thing, but it is, it's much more complex. And we're still trying to kind of wrap our head around, well, what can and can't we do? And how, how do we provide funding for it? What do we build them out of?
That's what I was getting alluding to because I've had several farmers saying they'd be willing to help on the expanse and even the work.
And that would be helpful. I think we need to figure out how much it's gonna cost. How many of them do we put in? There's, like I said, there isn't, I have yet to come across the standard that gives me any guidance on placement. Because like most things, when you're backing up traffic, probably not where you want it to be at the time. Just because you put a turnout there doesn't mean you're not backing up traffic several miles down the road.
I think what we do is we look at the easiest, most obtainable areas that are right there level with the road. So it's just leveling and graveling.
That might be helpful. And the travel public has to be patient. They have to understand. You know, we move agricultural equipment down these roads and you must be cautious. And, you know, we'll try and get some spots, hopefully. There might already be some existing spots that really, you know, it might just be a matter of signage. It's like your potential area for you to pull out and stuff. And certainly, you know, the approaches, the driveways, the larger ones for agriculture and stuff that are available, they can certainly pull off and use that now.
I just wanted to say, if there's a way, I don't want to get in your way, is what I'm saying. But if there's a way that I can help, I want to.
Yes, and believe me, I will reach out as soon as I got some notion as to how to proceed or if my recommendation is to proceed. But we are, we already kind of evaluated some potential spots. Right now, I'm just looking to see what, I have a duty, you know, protecting the county in risk. If, we have to be careful about how we approach it without making, with having a good intention of making a situation worse. And my first responsibility is, you know, protect the county's risk exposure. So we're looking at those elements of that too. And, you know, you're mixing that with state law and engineering. And sometimes those two are like water and oil. They don't always play well together. But we'll continue forth, looking into that.
Thank you.
Question for you on the previous comment that was made. Is there a, would there be a middle ground in that right-of-way vacation potential if there was a 20-foot utility and emergency access easement where that, you know, that it was much narrower than the 60 feet? Is there, is there opportunity there or?
Possibly. But that's really, you know, it's your decision as to whether you wish me to.
Evaluate that.
Go further with it. You know, like I said, it's.
And that's what I'm saying. The cloudy issue of these donut holes within the annexation of a city is creating this problem because we have different right-of-ways that the city has. And so this whole thing's a mess because of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the other thing I'd like to say is those usurpions that their founding fathers put against the king, the one that I like best is the one, "He has erected a multitude of new offices, sent out his hither swarm of officers to harass our people and to eat out their substance." And that is what's happening here in Washington State. They are eating out the substance of the hard-working people that pay their taxes. And a lot of them are gonna go out of business this year. Because I'm talking to tire people and their trucks are sitting. They are looking for business. They're looking for business and there is none because everybody's got such a tight budget right now. They're just trying to get through the year. And the adage out there is, what are we gonna grow to lose the least amount of money? That's the adage out there right now. Corn's dropping. It's just, it's not a good situation. So, and there's no need for an executive session. So at this time, is there any other business for the good of the county? So with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Do we need a break before we go into the workshop? Five-minute break. Okay, so we're back from a five-minute reset onto our workshop. And our workshop has one item today, and that is the 27, 25 to 20, 20, 25 to 20, 27 County Strategic Plan and Alignment. Mr. Danzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
First, I'd like to approve, get a motion to approve the workshop. Excuse me, I'm getting way ahead of myself here.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the workshop agenda as presented.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then I public comment. If there's anybody for public comment on the 20, 25 through 20, 27 County Strategic Planning and Alignment. Any comment?
Well, we've kind of already started it, but a better connection with our outlined communities as the centerpiece for a lot of their their services and their businesses. One of the words that I used in the application was, we don't have skyscrapers, we have farms. That is our biggest economic driver. It supports everything else, the municipalities, the schools, the jobs that are created by the Dairy Golds. And I'm still, I'm thinking that there are other entities that come and raise money for our community. One concern about housing that was brought up by Ben Shear, who was a part of the fire department until his recent retirement, and Kevin could get you in touch with him, is that he noticed that our low-income housing, people would come from the west side, wait to get on our rolls, get the low-income housing for HUD, and then move back over to the west side where the cost for apartments and such were way higher, but they were still on our rolls through our program. So I would ask you to drill down to that with Kevin and maybe Ben and because he worked in a in a community role within the fire department. That may not be entirely the case, but I think it's worth exploring because if we're going to fill our area with HUD housing, we're going to continue to be dependent on PILT. And I think we need housing that makes sense and is transitional to having full home ownership. Maybe it's a townhouse or duplex, but instead of having it as a rental situation, it's a rent-to-own situation and maybe some programs around that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment? Okay, seeing nobody else, nobody on the phone? So, Mr. Danzel, you're up.
Well, thank you.
Swing away, Merle, swing away.
I wasn't expecting that. All right, here we go. Well, gentlemen, last last week, we talked about putting together a two-year strategic plan so that we would have something that informed us about where we're going with policy updates and changes. Today, we're going to talk a little bit more about that. Our objective, this is our objective for the strategic plan, to collaboratively define a clear, actionable, two-year strategic plan that will provide direction, optimize resource allocation, enhance accountability, foster collaboration, and improve public trust. You know, one of the things that I think that we all agree on here are some of the bigger picture items that we need to tackle when it comes to establishing a reserve, when it comes to offloading some properties that don't have a current or future use for the county. And this is going to be how we go about doing it. So when it comes to the two bullet items that I appreciate the most are enhance accountability and also improve public trust. So with that, you'll see or you've had the chance now for a week to be able to look at and review our survey. There's a couple of things that I'd like to do with this. I'd like to see if you wanted to add anything to it, if there was any pertinent questions that were left out, and maybe give me feedback next week if you're or right now when you want to. And then the other thing was maybe a question for IS, which is if we have the capability of surveying online so that we could do this via both email but also on our home, on our webpage, so that people could come and maybe do a survey. And so I'll be asking IS about that later on. It'll just make it a lot more efficient if we're able to do that. So those are some housekeeping items. But did you want to say something, Commissioner?
I was just going to ask, what is the due date on those to be submitted by the public?
Oh, I don't have a due date right now because I want to make sure that you all like it and before we send it out wide. And then when we do that, you'd want to contain that to about two months.
I like it.
Yeah, okay.
I too like this. Just a little bit of historical knowledge on community surveys. City of Pasco does one pretty regularly. And historically, they have a very, very, I mean, like statistically, extraordinarily small turnout.
Yeah.
And so if there was a way, and I don't, I'm not a, I don't understand, you know, all of the way that all this works, but if there was a way for us to to engage with with people that'll actually engage in it, I don't know. You know, Pasco is a town of over 80,000, and I believe that there's been times that they got between 40 and 80 surveys. And statistically, that's just extraordinarily small amount. So excited to do it if we can, if it can provide value. Because if we survey a, you know, a county of 100-plus thousand people and we get 14, that's not really of a lot of value.
No. No, I agree with you. And I, that's always a consideration with surveys, what I would say. And if you, I think that you commissioners could help with this. If you build it into your repertoire, that when you're out and about making your meetings and taking, I would just ask you to cut aside a minute and talk about it. Hey, real quick here before I leave, just want to let you know, we're engaging in a two-year strategic plan. You can take a survey on our website, it'd really help us. And I think when you, you'll get a captive audience that way because when you're at your committee meetings, I think those are the types of people that would fill out a survey. And also, I think those are the folks that are kind of more engaged probably in the political process. The other part of it, too, is I would love if you, and you can direct me to do this, and I would like to do this, but if there are particular, you know, I come from the world of agriculture, so like USD, I'm thinking cattle ranchers, the wheat growers, the different commodity groups, folks like that, but also the Chamber of Commerce, any of the groups that you're that you're wanting to know. You mentioned an outfit today that you liked and thought highly of, maybe give them a survey and just kind of see where we could tailor it to best fit our needs, if that makes sense.
You're right on the, kind of where I was thinking. If we were to, you know, ask the City of Conell to help us with that, ask the City of Mesa, you know, ask, you know, our fire districts and our hospital district and the different people to help us truly evaluate and put together a two-year strategic plan. I believe if we asked, you know, formally asked them, and I don't know, maybe we put together a letter that that we sign formally asking for their input. I just, I'm excited about it because I know the value of getting good information if we actually get the information. So thanks, thanks for the effort on that. And yes, I will, I'll be happy to try to help, help get people. And if it's, it'd be great if we could send people to the website, there's a link.
Yep.
That'd be helpful.
If I might add, one thing I'm doing is I'm making printed copies. I'm handing it to the people.
Yeah. We like it.
Especially the people that have lived here their whole lives.
Yeah. I think that's a great call. You were talking about that last week with the elders of the community that have been here and seen, seen us go through the development and electrification and the infrastructure that Mr. Urban was talking about. So moving on, vision statement development. A vision statement describes the desired future state of Franklin County. It's intended to be inspirational, aspirational, and long-term. The key questions that I think we have to ask ourselves when developing this is, what does a thriving Franklin County look like in two years and beyond? And that could be not just financially, but policy-driven, too. You know, we've talked about ad nauseam, trying to get some of the code corrected and the comprehensive plan right. So that would be one of them. You know, whether it's, you know, tangible things such as we want to reach, you know, $5 million in our reserve fund, at least you have an idea of where we need to go. And then we have to, and it'll, we'll talk about this a little bit later, we have to be able to track it and have a route for getting those things done. How do we envision the quality of life, economic prosperity, and community well-being for our residents? What unique strengths or characteristics of Franklin County do we want to highlight and build upon? We've got a lot going for us. There's a lot of things that are going in the right direction. And so kind of the question there is, how do we build on that? How do we take the things that we're deficient in and then plug in a solution for it? And it's not going to be, again, the biggest part about this whole entire thing is accountability. Because putting things on a board is nice, it makes you feel warm, but then you've got to go and do the work. And so really, what we're going to be doing here, when we get these surveys, at the same time that we're trying to do what, and that's, by the way, we call that scoping. So when we're doing our scoping, what I'll be wanting to do is to develop a team with the clerk of the board and just a few key select other folks to be able to help with this, and also to help with the assignment of what is going to be done so that we can reach our objectives, if that makes sense. Activity, let's brainstorm keywords and phrases that describe our ideal future for Franklin County. The things that I came up with were economic health, community safety and well-being, infrastructure and services, and then Commissioner Baumann, to what you were saying, civic engagement. I think that civic engagement is a problem with all local government, frankly. And so I think the biggest thing that we can do is if we really buy into this process at the county and we let folks know that we're really trying to, and we can show that we've made progress on some of these things, that's when folks will get interested. They don't get too interested if you just throw things on a board and say, those are some ideas that we had. But if they see that we're actually working towards it, that's when folks, I've found, have get interested on a strategic plan or a bigger, broader set of goals. Then we have a mission statement. A mission statement defines the fundamental purpose of the Franklin County Commissioners. It clarifies what we do, for whom we do it, and how we do it. Current consideration, what is the core function of the Franklin County Commissioners and serving our constituents? And again, this, the reason I'm putting this on here is because we could either be proactive or reactive. I think from listening to you, what I've heard, all three of you gentlemen, is that you want to be proactive, you want to put policies in place that protect our budget in the future. You want to try to make sure that the road fund is left intact so that you can tackle some of those issues. And so again, I think this is an important thing that we're thinking this way. I think that we're thinking more strategic because we're looking at things that we can do to provide better increased services to our constituents. And I think I really have developed over time the belief that you gentlemen really do want to do that. You don't want to just let people come in and just react to whatever's being said. You want to actually kind of shape where we're going. And if we're going to have a direction that we're going, we have to have a strategic plan. What are the primary responsibilities and services that we provide to the county? Now, this goes to a lot of the things that Commissioner Didier, Commissioner Baumann, and Commissioner Mullen talk about, which is what is the role of government? Is it the county government's responsibility to do some of these things, or would it make more sense on the private sector or in some sort of a partnership, for example? But what are the primary responsibilities and services that we're that we're trying to provide? And this comes into play also, and we could pair it up with, it's really important when we're in a budget crunch or when we have decreased revenue streams like we've seen with our sales tax revenue declining. What are the primary responsibilities? So that's going to be a big tenet of this. How do we deliver these services? Obviously, with integrity, efficiency, transparency, and collaboration, those are great, but how are we going to go about doing the thing that we need to do in order to enhance our service here? Who are our primary beneficiaries? Residents, businesses, visitors, other governmental entities? It's real easy for you folks. I know that every one of you have always said this when I'm talking to you, you're doing this because you want to serve the people, your constituents. And so I think that's a pretty obvious thing. When you move on, and we're talking about refining our focus, and this is another big step here, we want to have these three tenets kind of at play. We want to be concise, action-oriented, and relevant. I think one of the things, and we've seen this before, everybody that's been in local government has seen this before, that you get some good, and we've talked about this just recently, you get some good momentum going, looks like you're starting to try and make steps in the right direction, and then people, they kind of like burn out or it doesn't quite get over the finish line. So accountability is going to be achievable in this, and I think that these goals are achievable if we stay concise, action-oriented, and relevant. Some of the pie-in-the-sky idea, you know, because that can take over pretty easily if you start getting into, well, I think that we should put a theme park at the county courthouse. You know, you can start talking about some of these pie-in-the-sky wild ideas. I think a better and much more deliberate and responsive thing to do would be to say that we want to, you know, make sure that the funding's right. We want to set aside enough road funds to be able to complete the infrastructure that we desire. We want to make sure that we are in the best place possible when it comes to these inter-local agreements and these contracts. Because as all local government starts to tighten, and I'm sure you've seen the figures coming out of Olympia with their revenues, you can better believe that each and every single governmental organization is going to be looking out for their best interest. And so when there's money involved, we have to be deliberate, and we have, right now is the is the right time for that. Core values identification. What are core values? That's a good thing to start off. What are core values? Fundamental beliefs and guiding principles that dictate behavior and actions of the Franklin County Commissioners and staff. They represent what is most important to us and how we operate, and that's kind of what we're getting at here. What are the big things? What are we going to do to be able to get there? But how are we going to act and hold ourselves? What principles consistently consistently guide our decisions and interactions? Well, I can tell you from my experience in working with you gentlemen, the principles that have guided your decisions are always bound with financial best interests of the county. Can we afford it? What's the fiscal impact? How is this going to affect our citizens? I've heard each and every one of you mention that. What do we stand for as a governing body? I think that's important, too. I think it's a more of a philosophical question, but what are we at the end of the day, and at the end of your term, what are you looking to accomplish while you're in those chairs? I think it's an important question to ask. What qualities do we expect from ourselves and those we work with? This one's, I think, a no-brainer, but this goes to the accountability and also the ability to reach out to the folks that aren't in county government. So not only about those folks that we work with internally, but how about the folks we work with that are from outside the county government? I think it's an important step that's missing for most folks. We just kind of usually zone in on what is happening within the walls of the government. I think it's good to get the folks outside understanding what we're doing. Potential values to consider, transparency, we talked about that a time or two already this meeting, accountability, the same, integrity. We have to be able to provide excellent service, and I think that, which, by the way, a commitment to excellence, Commissioner Didier, was the great Al Davis's line for the Raiders, which is, which is true, though. You have to be able to provide the most, I think we want to do that. I think that the county commissioners have instructed me that they want the highest level of service possible. Collaboration, who are we working with? This is a word that's kind of a buzzword, by the way, in my opinion. I've, I sometimes choke over the word collaboration because I think it's overused, but when it's utilized correctly, like when you collaborate with folks, like say, the farm community, the ag community, folks like that, Chamber of Commerce, business owners, folks that are trying to get a road vacated, whatever it might be, when you're collaborating with folks in the right way and not just using it as a catchphrase, it can be really powerful. Fiscal responsibility, this is the first thing that my priority for the county is. We have to be informed by what our budget says. I think this is true of not only a budget here, but a budget at your house, a budget at your business. You're going to, you're going to not be able to make the best decisions, and you're not going to make the best decisions if your fiscal position, your cash position, your finances, and your budget aren't the first priority. Innovation, embracing new ideas and approaches for improvement. I think I could probably get better at this myself, to be honest with you, when it comes to some software programs. But it's not going to go backwards. It's kind of like when we talk about the public records request. I don't see a time ever where we'll get less public records requests. I think we're only going to get more public records requests. So that's a good example of making sure that we are able to approach it. Equity, ensure fair and just treatment for all residents, I think we all know that. Here's what I get excited for, strategic goal setting. The key areas for goal setting, we need to be specific, the the goals have to be measurable and achievable. This goes back to kind of what we were talking about last week, when it comes to being able to deliver on it. It needs to be relevant. Like I said, it can't be a pie-in-the-sky idea that probably has no chance of happening. And I think that a defined timeframe is the most important. So right now, we're working on a, I say two years, but really, it's a year and a four months, really, is what we're looking at, to try to be able to deliver by the end of '26 what you all want to deliver on. So here's some examples of strategic goal categories, economic development, public safety, infrastructure improvement, community engagement, and operational efficiencies. I'm not going to read through everything there because those are all pretty self-explanatory, but I think that those are great ideas for us even. Economic development, public safety, I hear that from the commissioners every time I talk to them, that our job is public safety and infrastructure. Community engagement is obviously on the forefront, as we've talked about, and then our operational efficiency. about. And then our operational efficiency, we have to be able to improve our internal processes through this process, because that's kind of the whole point. What we're trying to do is we're trying to become more responsive, more agile, and kind of perfect where we are as a county. For today, I just wanted to, I wanted to make this a little bit more streamlined, but the structured approach to strategic planning provides a solid foundation for our work over the next couple of years. By clearly articulating our objectives, vision, mission, values, and strategic goals, we can ensure that Franklin County continues to thrive and effectively serves its residents. We look forward to your input and collaboration. One of the things that I would mention, when we get to the next step of this, I think we want to name it. I don't know that Franklin County two-year strategic plan is kind of a mouthful. So I think like taking ownership and naming it, and when it comes to the mission, vision, values, having the folks within the side of the county help develop those. But what I would like to recommend at this point is, I think I have a pretty good idea on our one-on-one conversations of what you all are looking for through this. So I would like to now take this to the action phase of this, and actually start implementing part of this after we get some of our scoping back. But I think that we can front-load it to the point where I kind of know where you're wanting to go with your big overarching five to eight goals that we talked about. I think we start getting that work done, and then we go about, we figure out how to go about getting there through the surveys. We add and subtract from the surveys. We get all the information that we can in a two-month period. And until that two-month period is up, I would like to continue to narrow this down and do these workshops. I don't know if we need to do it every week, but I think if we don't, it goes back to the thing where it just kind of fizzles out. Where did it go? I can tell you another thing. I've had multiple elected officials tell me that there have been a lot of really great ideas in Franklin County in years past. And the kind of the thing is, what happened to that? What, how come we're not doing that anymore? What happened to this, you know, whatever it might be? And I think that we can, we can make, make sure that we're sticking to this if we do it regularly. I think that the idea would be about every couple of weeks, we come and have a check-in. Doesn't have to be very long. I can tell you what we're working on, how the scoping is going. And then once we hit that two-month part, I think that the big thing is going to be that we have to be able to take action. And when we do that, when we're able to get to a point where you can, we can articulate clearly what our, our goals are and our objectives through this process, the reason that's important is that will inform your office of what policies to be working on. So if we're, if we're working towards financial sustainability and making sure we're putting that first, we're going to have some financial policies that we need to adopt, and we can get that done right away. I think we can do that. And then it's actually sticking to it. The hardest part of the whole thing is sticking to it. And I'll tell you where it's going to be tough. It's going to be tough when you want to not, or if there's a project that we want to spend on, or somebody has a great reason why they should probably utilize county funds, and we are going to have to just stick to making sure that we try to fulfill our obligations under the reserve policy. And that's hard. That can be difficult, and especially the first time that you do it, it can be difficult where you have to say, no, we can't, we can't spend that money, because we've already got a policy on the books that we're going to try in five years to be able to, and hopefully sooner than that, but in three to five years, be able to establish a reserve fund that makes sense. And that kind of goes hand, it kind of just all starts leading off from one another. Because once you establish a reserve fund, one of the biggest barriers to not being able to do self-insurance, for example, is that first year of self-insurance. You have to have a reserve fund there, and, and the proper stop-loss coverage on your, on your self-insured policy. I think we could get there. I think that we could do that if we hit the reserve for the overall budget. Then you start looking at going to a self-insurance, which I think everybody's going to be on some form of, whether it's a hybrid or full self-insurance moving forward, because it's just getting to be that way. That's kind of the climate that we're in. But that'll help you set up that, too. So I think what you're seeing here is, without the strategic plan, it's sort of a rudderless function. If we have an idea and a game plan and a roadmap to how we want to operate and what we want to get done, we'll get it done. We just got to hold each other accountable and make sure that we keep doing this. And so what I would ask of you is to hold us accountable and to have those meetings, those workshop meetings every couple of weeks, and to allow us to go ahead and front-load some of the other work, because we're having to catch up here. You know, we don't have the full two years. But I don't want to wait anymore. I want to start putting these plans into action and get them ready for you, so that you can take action during your meetings. And that'll be a, you know, it'll work really well together, I think, to be able to mirror both our strategic plan, and then the policies that we're changing to try to obtain those goals, if that makes sense. So with that, sorry, I was a little bit worried. I was trying to get through as quick as I possibly could with still being able to kind of deliver on what I think you're looking for, which is kind of a clear process for how we're going to do this. Let me know if you want me to go to these places. If you think, hey, come along with me to a meeting and introduce your, the whole idea of this proposal, take five minutes, I'll be there. If it's after hours, I'll be there. I'm a Franklin County resident now, and I love it. So please just let me know, because I, Commissioner Baumann is totally correct. What good is scoping if you get eight people to turn in, you know, a survey, and there's, you know, ninety-five thousand, a hundred thousand people living here? And with that, I take any comments, questions, and compliments.
Questions, commissioners?
I don't know if I have a lot of questions on that, but it's extraordinarily rare that you win on, on defense. You win on offense. And, and putting together a strategic plan and saying, this is where we're going, and this is the steps we're going to take to get there. And here's the, here's the values that we're going to make those decisions by, is, is, can be a pretty powerful thing. And I haven't been a part of, you know, professional sports teams and winning Super Bowls or anything myself. However, we've, we're in the presence of people that have been a part of that. And I've, I've been a part of some pretty neat teams where that you can win on purpose. And you, you sit down and you make a plan, and you, you know, you talk about some of the challenges along the way, and how you're going to overcome those challenges, and you, you win on purpose. And I'm excited that, that you're putting this together. I'm thankful, and I'll, I'll give you everything I got to help achieve that. And as I was talking to our, our Public Works Director earlier, I want to help in every way possible, but I don't want to be in the way and in doing that. And so please let me know how I can do it. And I didn't think about it, but I appreciate your idea of, of printing them out and handing them to people and asking them to turn them in. And, you know, we sat on, between the three commissioners, and, and you sat on a number of boards on behalf of the county as well. If we were to ask our peers that, that we interact with, if they would help us out, what do you see? What, what does it look like? And, you know, if we were to reach out to our, our, all of the different, the districts within our region, we have from sewer and water districts to, to fire districts, hospital district, you know, that kind of thing, if we were to ask them, that's the, that really represents a lot of the leadership within our communities, is, and, and ask them if they'll take it to their, to their sphere and their group, you know, deliberately. I've found, having been a part of volunteer organizations for a long time, I've found that a lot of people don't because they haven't been asked. And, you know, to go ask somebody specifically, will you, a lot of times you get a favorable, a favorable response. So I'll do everything I can. I'll try to, try to help with the, you know, bringing that information forward. And please let me know how to help, but not be in the way. And I'm excited about this. Thank you. And thank you to the two ladies in our office that have been helping put this together and, and, and serving the residents of our county. And, and thank you.
Commissioner Mullen, are you still with us? I don't know if you made it.
I am.
There you are. Do you have any comments?
No, just looking forward to it.
Okay. Well, I've got a few here. I was jotting down some notes through that presentation. And I, mission statement, I think we need to, one aspect of it should be limited government. I mean, we all talk about a limited government. Our founders put in together a limited government, but look at government today. It's in our bedrooms. It's in every integral place of our lives. And we need to get away from it. With that, lower taxes and fees. I want to see Franklin County and our bosses, our residents out there, I want them to feel this plan as a success. And that's limiting the taxes and fees. If we can lower them on them, they're going to love us. Enhance private property rights. Enhance freedom and liberty in the Franklin County area, like it was intended to be. And maybe for the Franklin County Just Win Plan. As a title, that's Al Davis, "Just Win, Baby, Just Win." The Franklin County Just Win Plan. But who's going to win? Our bosses, the residents of Franklin County. And they win by paying less in taxes. So that's my, my idea there. Your whole presentation was incredible, Mr. Denzel. I got to say, you're getting very good at the PowerPoint presentations. Did you put that one together?
Well, I must admit, I think I've told you this before, so I don't mind sharing this. I put together the material on the slides, but dating back to, and I can't get it out of my brain, I had a, a real problem when I was in the legislature trying to do a PowerPoint where every slide, it would go two over. And so I'd have four lines show up on the wrong slide. Teresa Alvarez put it together, sir.
I already knew the answer. She is a diamond in the rough, is she not?
Fantastic. I got to tell you, the whole, it's a pleasure to work here. And I want to say something, too. It's not, it's a pleasure to work with you gentlemen and with the ladies in the office. It's a pleasure, pleasure to work with a lot of the elected officials here and the department heads. But I'm excited about this. I, I really, I, I think that this will be a real breath of fresh air for you all, because it'll, you'll, I think a lot of the frustration that I've heard from all the commissioners is, gosh, we just, seems like we're not quite moving as fast as we'd like, or we're not doing this or that, or we're not, we're just kind of coming in and passing bills, or paying bills and, you know, passing minor policies. This, you'll enjoy this. I really fully believe that the commissioners will enjoy it. I think that the people will get a kick out of it, because I think it'll be fun for them to be able to like tell us where we need to prioritize. And I think you'll be interested and excited to get that information.
So if I may ask, our clerk of the board, if we could get, each get twenty printed copies with that cover letter, and that way we can start delivering them as we go out and mingle with the public. Hey, please, and if you would, you got a copy machine, make five copies and give it to five friends of yours, and tell them what we're trying to do here. We got to make this thing spread and get out there, so the public do. And you know, one other thing I thought of is, one way to really get people to participate is to bribe them with food. So maybe we have a Franklin County barbecue or something.
Coffee with a commissioner, and put, put together and, and have a couple of them. And, and we can publicly notice it and go to Conell, Mesa. I'm ready.
Well, a great presentation, and it's, it's got me motivated. I know that. I'm ready to go hand out some of these flyers. I got four already, but I need more. So is there any other comments, Mr. Baumann? Huh? Oh, yes. Public comment. Is there anybody for public comment? Anybody on the phones? Anybody for public comment?
So listening to you speak, Mr. Denzel, way back when I had just retired, you know, and become a kept woman, although I didn't want to be, and I had a great husband, and he is so supportive of me, I'm not kept at all. We're just a great partnership. But what I wanted to do, and I saw this same gap, was to create tours and go to the different groups and say, come in, tour, understand how this works, this is where the offices are. And then I also wanted, somebody that was, you know, kind of an ambassador for that, or a group of maybe retired folks that kind of know a little bit more can kind of tell you where to find stuff, because that's ninety percent of the issue when you, you try to embrace with your government on an issue is like, there's all this stuff that you don't know. And it, it actually pertains to whatever the issue it is. The other thing I would like to see is some kind of representation going to the schools and saying, how would you, what would you like to know about your, your local government? And spend some time in the high schools, because young people are very interested more and more about their future and what's going on. And that might be a shared thing that the city and you do together. And then you begin to cultivate people to come and sit and listen for a day or have coffee with a commissioner, as your time allows, because I know your time is very, very heavily trafficked for all the issues, which we greatly appreciate. But that was something that there was actually a grant for at the time. I don't know it's available now, but that would be good.
All right. If there's no other public comment, and then there's nobody on the phone, I'll adjourn the workshop.